Call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise? Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming this evening. Tom Anderson and Mike Murray will not be with us, and Kristika will not be here either because it's senior recognition night tonight up at the high school, and obviously that would be the priority for him, and I don't blame him. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So.
By Todd, second by Stacy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. On our consent agenda this evening is a check wire transfer dispersment summary, the bank reconciliation statement, board minutes, meeting minutes from May 7 and May 21st. Donations as follows: Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign, Jill Dahl $175, and Jennifer Everson $188.44. Alina Health Community Engagement, South Metro $3,500 for targeted services summer school program. Two HP digital cameras, HP printer, and HP deluxe carrying case from Cynthia and Eric Kill. $77 from Shane and Abby Cuchera for Jeffers Pond through the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign. $100 from Andrew and Ann Ellertson for Jeffers Pond through a Refer a Friend program. Wood valued at $400 from Art and Sue L. for the Prior Lake High School Industrial Technology Department. Egyptian history books from Alice Nickerson, Presbyterian Homes for Twin Oaks Middle School. $2,000 from Leo and Cindy Lee from Fong's for scholarships. Resignations as listed, and that's our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? By Stacy, second.
I will second that.
By Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Next we'll move on to Laker Pride, and we have George Papajan, Cargill here, if you'd come forward along with Lisa Prophylis.
I'll stay here. I think we'll start with Lisa and let her tell a little bit of history. We tried to get this gentleman here last year, and he couldn't make it. And he's given a contribution or made sure a contribution was made again this year, so we talked him into coming. So Lisa, tell us the history on this.
Yeah, we have, with Friends of Woolridge, one of the things that we do in order to keep our Woolridge Environmental Learning Center program for our fifth graders in our district, we work together to contact different businesses to reach out and see if they can provide us with grants so that we can continue this program. We've actually been able to go for the last 35 years, amazing, and Cargill has just been a great partner with us. This, George and I were talking, this is the fourth year that they've donated to our program, thousands of dollars. This year, they gave us a check for $5,000 to help continue this program, which is just amazing, and we wanted to make sure we took this time to publicly thank them, and we pulled George over here from work so that we could thank him personally.
So we would like to thank you on behalf of our school district and thank Cargill for their generous support at Woolridge, because we know it's a fabulous opportunity for our students that we're trying to keep alive, and corporations like Cargill are doing that for us, and we're very appreciative of your efforts to make that happen. So thank you very much. Would you like to say anything?
I guess I would just say that Cargill has a focus on education and the environment, so a program like this is a really good match for us. It hits those two targets, and we're always looking for volunteer hours as well, so I've reached out to Lisa and others to say if there are opportunities for the employees at our location to volunteer. That's really where we'd like to go next in addition to dollars.
And we'd be very happy to take you, and all of your friends, all of your coworkers. We have lots of opportunities for volunteers to work with us in our schools, both during the school day and afterward. So our eSTEM, our environmental and STEM focus now as we move forward will continue to be a high point for us, and we'll be reaching out to corporations like Cargill to get volunteers. So thank you very much. This is for you, and thank you so much. All right.
Our other Laker Pride person is Kristika, who, as I mentioned earlier, isn't with us tonight. He's been very dedicated to coming to our meetings. He's been very good at keeping all of us informed with what's going on at the high school, very entertaining too when he gives his reports. He's really good. And as always, his gift for all of his time that he spent on the board is his name plaque, so we will give that to him shortly. If you have anything to add, Sven.
It is always a pleasure to sit next to a student, senior at our high school as a board rep, and Chris has just been exceptional this year. He asks great questions and is thoughtful about his responses, and has been ready for reports when they've been timely and well-presented. So we're very fortunate to have Chris not only here but as a leader at our high school. He's really helped make that culture at the high school very welcoming and friendly, and it's been a good positive change for us this year, and an add-on from what happened last year into this year. As we move forward, we just hope that culture continues. So our best wishes to Chris as he moves on to his college experience.
Okay, this is a time when we have open forum. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board this evening on an item that's not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel. Matt?
Good evening. First off, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do you have a motion to accept the candidates for employment as listed?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
I will second that.
By Rich. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
And next, I'm presenting the following leave of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the leave of absence? By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
And my last section here is a presentation to rescind two leaves of absence that were previously granted. And just a quick word on these. In one of these cases, we received both a letter of resignation and a leave request within the same period, and we did bring forward the wrong proposal to the board last month. And then in the second case, that was actually a glitch with our compute, with our employee software program, where the employee does not work enough hours to fall under our board policy for leaves of absence.
Okay. Do I have a motion to rescind leaves of absences? By Stacy, second.
I'll second that.
By Rich. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Next, Matt?
Now we'll move on to old business. The board meeting study session proposal. As you remember, on this last meeting, we approved the calendar for the actual dates of our meetings, and we had a workshop again since then, and discussed the possibility of continuing with this format of going with one meeting a month and one workshop. The exception to that would be July, December, and April, when we only have one meeting or one time period, and that will be a board meeting. The enclosed in your packet is the board calendar. I think we're discussing that a little bit later on in the agenda, and it's been divided out between board meetings and workshops. And some of those workshop topics will definitely be fluid as to whether we want to discuss them or not. A couple of them need to get pulled. I believe that they probably should be more meeting topics than workshop topics. That just needs to be refined, but we can talk about that when we get to that part further. And for now, I'm asking for board approval to continue with a one meeting and one work session of a month. Do I have a motion to accept that proposal?
I'll make that motion.
By Rich, second. By Stacy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Thank you. Now we'll move on to new business, and this has to do with Savage and the school district lease. You know, you take that over.
Absolutely, and I'll invite Jay Swires to come up. He has some packets for the board members, hot off the press. If you'll recall, last year we had the conversation. Absolutely. We had, we had the decision to move forward with our proposal regarding SS9. Since that time, the city of Savage has been working with Prior Lake Aggregates to define what their agreements will be. And Jay has been our assigned person to work with the other lawyers from each of those organizations to make sure that the, that the agreement that we approved is in fact held true as these second agreements are being made. So he's here tonight to give us an update on the amendment to the developers' agreement and the assignment and assumption agreement.
And we actually will request board approval of those documents. It's the city of Savage's intent to approve those at their next council meeting, which is in mid-June as well. I think you had in your packet copies of the underlying agreements. These agreements are the same as you had in your packet. What they do have are the attachments that are, that are attached and referenced in the document, which we've been working on up until this evening as well to, to get those attached for you. As the superintendent indicated, the history on this goes way back, but more recently, in April of 2011, as the board may recall, you approved an agreement with Prior Lake Aggregates that provided for some adjustments in the high school development involving the relocation of a road and construction of some athletic fields. One of the conditions of that agreement or contingencies of that agreement was that the city approvals that had been given for the high school site would need to be modified. The city approved a conditional use permit and a site development plan which was different than those modifications. So over the last year, among other things that have been done, there's been an effort to navigate the city process and to work out the terms of an agreement. So what these agreements are, are adjustments to the approvals that the city gave initially when they approved the high school development. There are two documents before you. The first one is an amendment to the developers' agreement, and that essentially incorporates or memorializes those particular adjustments. And as the board will recall, it involved the construction of fields that weren't initially part of the approval, the extension of a street and relocation of a street that weren't part of the initial approvals, and then some true replacement requirements that result from that. So the amendment has a number of exhibits attached. I would point out that Exhibit B is probably not the final version of Exhibit B. Up until the end here, we, the architect was communicating with PLA, and we couldn't quite get the final details on the field technical requirements for when those new recreational fields are constructed. So the Exhibit B that we're going to have to attach for city approval will simply say that prior to actual development of those fields, the parties will agree to the requirements for field construction. So it'll be simpler than, as you can see in the current Exhibit B, some of the technical specifications that talk about the amount of topsoil and things like that. With that exception, the other exhibits are the same. So the second agreement is an assignment and assumption agreement, and that's an agreement that then takes this amendment to the developers' agreement and passes off the obligation to undertake those things to Prior Lake Aggregates, consistent with the April 2011 agreement between the school district and PLA. So the assignment and assumption simply says that all those new things that have to be done under this amendment to the developers' agreement will be done by PLA, and I think most importantly, the city releases the school district from the responsibility for doing those. So they agree that they will look to PLA to work out the details, and if things need to be done, it will be PLA's responsibility to do those, not to fall back on the school district and say PLA isn't doing those, so we, no, the school district, you need to do those as well. So that was an important feature of the agreement with the city as well. So these, there are some other things that need to be done over the course of the next number of years. PLA will need to amend its mining permit. Ultimately, when they develop the property, those field specifications will have to be worked through with the parties. But this is the first significant step that we've taken since April of 2011 in satisfying all those contingencies and eventually making those adjustments a reality. So with that, what we're submitting to you for approval tonight would be approving the assignment and assumption agreement with the attached exhibit, which is the PLA agreement, and approving the amendment to the developers' agreement, with the exception of recognizing that Exhibit B will say something more like the parties will agree in the future to their requirements, for the requirements for the fields.
Are there any questions? Eric?
Jay, part of that was an agreement with the city of Savage to, and I'm not exactly sure how to word it, so I'm just, I'll let you correct my question here. But at some point in time, rather than requiring PLA to take out a second bond in order, surety bond in order to guarantee the work, there was some talk about the, the school district being able to leverage what the city's already got in place as far as guarantees from PLA Y in case they can't fulfill their obligations. Is that part of these two agreements?
It's not finalized in part of these agreements. One of the, those contingencies I mentioned that still needs to be resolved is the question of security. And I think it, again, in the future, it'll probably be at a point in time when the amended mining permit is applied for, when the PLA property is actually proposed for development, that then that security will have to be determined, and then we'll have to decide if the, the adjustments to the bond on the mining permit are sufficient to protect the interests of the school district. So that's accounted for in the agreements. It just hasn't happened yet. And I would point out, as a related issue as well, one of the exhibits, you'll see Exhibit E to the amendment agreement, the city also is requiring additional security from Prior Lake Aggregates to assure the completion of these improvements, and that's by way of a mortgage on certain parcels within their ownership, and those are identified in Exhibits E. So in another respect as well, collectively, the school district and city are assuring that there's security there to be sure that this gets done.
Right, thanks.
A couple of questions legally. On the amendment to the developers' agreement, you have March of 2012 on that first sentence. Should that, shouldn't that be changed?
Well, I was optimistic. Yeah, that was an earlier version. We didn't catch that. That should be true.
Any other questions?
Yes, if I may. On what, the agreement, I'm looking between what I had in the packet and what you just gave. In the, one of the agreements, the construction of the street extension shall be completed no later than 365 days after the first building permit. Looking here.
Page two.
That is in the Exhibit A of the agreement.
It's on page two, Rich.
Yeah, it's in the actual amendment. I think you're referring to Paragraph 2B1?
Yeah.
In the actual amendment?
I'm a little bit confused on the whole timing of the, because in one part of the document, they have to have the work completed by the end of 2015, but then you give them another year to complete the road?
I'd have to work through how those provisions relate. The underlying PLA agreement is incorporated by reference, so ultimately, that's the end date, is the 2015 date that we would have.
Okay.
So this could certainly be sooner.
So by, in this document, the work, that means the leveling of the land, the grading, and the road, does that include the bituminous and all that?
I believe the bituminous was scheduled to be completed in conjunction with the development of the property and some of those activities that would occur in conjunction with development of PLA property. I think it was the rough grading and access to those fields that was scheduled to be completed as part of the first phase.
So, Sven, you can help me. They do the rough grading, then on whose dime is the topsoil and the final development of the fields done?
They, no, their commitment is to the fields, and that was part of what Jay was referring to with this Exhibit B, is that that's, that's a first draft of it, but in reality, that has to be worked out between PLA and the school district before the completion. So that's, the quality of the topsoil, the leveling of the fields, the, the finishing of the area would all be on PLA, but we will have a say into what that quality of that work is, as well as they will, and they'll have a time to react to that. At this time, it's in concept versus in reality.
Development of the fields, the cost of that is on PLA, and as well the bituminous surface, the underlying PLA agreement provides that ultimately, the school district will not be responsible for that. Either PLA will do it, or if the city does it and assess back, assesses back the cost, the underlying PLA agreement says that PLA will, in effect, hold the school district harmless from any assessment. So that was one of the considerations in the discussion as well, to be protected from the cost of bituminous overlay ultimately when that's completed.
So all the work's supposed to be done by 215?
That's the hopeful date, is that it would be done by 2015. Now, if that's not possible or there's not a developer ready to do that, Eric, then, then we would revisit these contracts again.
My concern is, they'll mine the land, but this phrase in here, 365 days after the first building permit, does that give them a time where they can take it, put in preliminary class five or whatever they need to do, then wait till they issue their first building permit, and then they have 365 days after that to finish that road?
If I understand you correctly, well, the way that we've talked about this with Bill Pearson is that he doesn't want to start it until it's ready to go, until he has a developer ready to, to take that first phase and go with it. Then he'll begin the tear down. But we asked for the, we asked that be done in one season, and a building committee can help me with this, to remembering this, so that, that if they start it in the fall, that we'd be finished within 365 days versus drug, you know, cutting down the trees and then having nothing happen for three or four years. We didn't want that to happen. We wanted them to, and when they tear down the trees, that we would then have a development beginning, and we would have the fields developed within a calendar year. Eric, you were on that committee. Is that the way you recall it?
It is, and if, if I recall, Jay, the building permit was really about the grading and the construction of the fields, not any building permit on the PLA development, because that one they have to pull for us.
In, in the underlying PLA agreement, which is Exhibit A to your assignment agreement, Paragraph 5 is the provision that, that focuses in on those concerns about timing. That's where it has the 2015 date, and as the superintendent indicated, PLA was a bit concerned about not having crystal ball, so we included some language that said they can request an extension from the board if they wish at that time, but the board had no obligation to grant it. But it was a placeholder for them to, to be mindful that they at least had a right to ask, and then that's also where we dealt with that, doing it in one construction season, some of those other timing concerns, to nail down that end date.
And then the, the final plans will come back to this board for approval, right?
The, the final plans for the...
Education.
We'll be bringing, I think this will be, we'll be revising this as a board many times over the course of the next several years as these agreements between the different parties get resolved, but certainly the fields will come back.
I won't take any more time. I just want to say I was strongly opposed to this when it originally came before the board, and I will be voting no.
And that the plans and specs are called out. That's one of those things in Paragraph 13 of the PLA agreement I mentioned. We did have that express provision that required school district and school board approval of the final plans and specs. So there will, as the superintendent points out, there will be a number of things that will continue to come before you over the next period of time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the documents as presented? By Stacy, second.
Second.
Any last comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Me.
That motion carries for once. Thank you.
Thank you. The superintendent does have some execution copies for the board, and I think there were some extra copies, if the press wanted to get those, as we hand things out, they have a right to get a copy too, so you should have some of those too.
And I'll hang on to those until we chat again. And they do have the wrong date on them, do you want to replace that page, or?
The March date?
Yes.
We'll work, we'll work on that. We'll work on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the technology, Jeff?
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, members of the board, Dr. Grover, Mr. Malazo and I are here tonight to present to you a technology proposal that we've been talking about for the last couple of weeks through Board Work Session, and also a recommendation for you to consider this evening as well. To give a brief history, for several years now, we've had several needs emerging through the district in terms of technology. Mr. Malazo's been working with our Technology Committee and going through a process of evaluation, needs assessment, survey. We've also had other areas come up too, just with curriculum groups and also with some of our staff administrative groups, that really round out these three areas of need in the district. The three are staff workstations, or the desktop computers, district wireless infrastructure, and our data warehouse. As a brief overview and look at what we're proposing this evening for technology is to replace all staff workstations to approximately 700 computers. We would take the current computers that staff are using and re-casgate or redeploy them to the rest of the district, to building computer labs. We have an inequity currently with some of our computer labs, we also have computers that are vastly outdated in some of our, in some of our elementary and secondary schools. And so of the 700, we do have computers that would be an upgrade, so to speak, in looking at our current lab capabilities in the district. Just as a brief overview, we do have a wide amount of equipment that extends eight-plus years old, nine, 10 years old, and even with some of our staff workstations at that level, we do have a fleet of workstations that are within that three-to-five-year period of time, that we would be able to, the students would benefit that as well for testing or curriculum types of components. We would look at some of our most out-of-date computers and dispose of them. We would also factor in the seven pod labs at the Priorlake High School as recommended by the Growth Task Force, which would be 250 computers. We are earmarking additional funding for furniture and wiring costs for each pod lab. We presently have the furniture and wiring for three pod labs, but there would be four remaining areas that we would need to include. Each pod area with just the furniture and wiring is about a $15,000 price tag, so $60,000 total is what we would be proposing. And overall, in both, in this staff, in this workstation part, we are looking at total computers of 950. One of the things that we've been talking about and looking at is purchasing or looking at a three-year lease, and one of the aspects that we've really been spending a lot of our time on is looking at technology being part of curriculum and part of the essential conditions that are necessary in every classroom for student learning. And it's the importance of that equipment being new, up-to-date, so that our teachers are able to deliver the curriculum to students that has been adopted, it's able to use, it's a smart notebook software, and presently, we have some limitations in that area with our staff being able to deliver those essential conditions. And so, we've been looking at a lease option, a sustainable lease option, that we are able to factor in fresh workstations for staff, at least for the next two to three years, as we evaluate more long-term solutions. We also took some time to look at what are the different options of a lease, from a fair market value to a buyout or equity option. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Malazo to talk about really his work with the vendors, as well as the type of computer that we're looking at.
We have reached out to three vendors, and we provided a minimum specs for the computer that we were looking for. Those specs include an i5 processor, four gigs of RAM, 500 gig hard drive, and 22-inch monitor. So we asked our vendors to spec out those minimum requirements, and then what they have returned is what you see here on these slides.
This three that we looked at, we presently are, the computers we have in the district are HP. We also looked at Dell as another comparable vendor to secure a quote from, and we also looked at Apple. Just briefly, we have made, while we predominantly have been a HP shop, I guess, so to speak, as a district, we have made inroads with Apple across, as a district, the last year, year and a half, with iPad deployment and also Mac Labs, two Mac Labs at the high school for photography and graphic arts. But when we're looking at these types of proposals, either through fair market value or through the buyout equity option, they're presently, HP and Dell do come up to the top as a more cost-effective solution for the district at this time. Just as another word on Apple, when you're looking at Apple products, they certainly are recognized as a leader in education, they certainly do, we certainly found certain benefits with Apple products and some of the inroads that we're making. But this type of, what we're looking at right now is really a refresh of our current equipment, and looking at Apple would be a total different, totally different platform for our school district. And so, as we look down the road, we're certainly open to continuing to investigate and look at Apple products and mobile devices, but moving forward, we are focusing more of this proposal on HP and Dell for the district in the short term, that we're going to be proceeding with here shortly as our recommendation. The other aspect that we talked about is our wireless infrastructure. I'm going to have Mr. Malazo talk about how we kind of came up with these numbers and how we kind of identified what do we need at each of our sites.
We've reached out to a vendor in the Meraki Wireless and asked the Meraki engineers to come through our buildings and do a site survey, and say, for a complete saturation of all areas of each individual building. And using proprietary software, those Meraki engineers have walked through our buildings and mapped or plotted access points throughout our buildings to provide complete coverage. So the dollars that you see here on this slide reflect that work that the Meraki engineer has completed.
It also fits very well with our focus on 21st century learning, 21st century conversations about what teaching, learning, and ultimately, the educational experiences for students will be more in the present, in the next one, two, to three years and beyond. And in addition to having those essential conditions, having that sound wireless infrastructure is also a necessary component for students and for staff. The third aspect that we're going to be looking at and sharing with you tonight as a proposal is a data warehouse component, and that's something that we have been talking about for the last several years. And the data warehouse is a repository that really is all student data in the district, from testing to attendance to discipline grades, to be able to break it out by subgroup. And one of the things as a board, and as also administratively, we talk about finding information on students at our fingertips, and being able to get that information so that we can make educational decisions about what a student should be doing, or types of interventions we should be doing with students. And presently, our current system does not allow us to do that. A data warehouse is a very user-friendly program, you know, that students, that, excuse me, that staff can use to pull information so that they can garner reports and take that information with them to child study teams, whether it be for interventions or for gifted and talented differentiation, but also to be able to share with parents, you know, the types of things, how students are doing across the board. When we started looking at the data warehouse, as you can see, that there's a wide variety of products. We looked at three products, there are several others out there, but we're finding that there's really a disparity of cost, but also too, there's a disparity of really what these products can do for us. And so, this is important for the district, but it's also important that we take some time to really research the data warehouse aspect, and to come back to you with additional information for you to consider. But we've included that in our recommendation moving forward for you tonight. And so what we are recommending for our Phase 1 here, looking at 2012, 2013, is to pursue a three-year lease to replace all staff workstations across the district, and include the pod labs at Priorlake High School, which would be 950 computers. Part of that plan would be taking the best of the best computers that we have of the 700 staff computers and redeploy them out to the building computer labs district-wide. We do anticipate that there would be some additional wiring costs to facilitate that. We would continue then to dispose our out-of-date computers and monitors, and include one-time costs of furniture and wiring of four pod labs. We would also recommend for this next year, implement the secondary portion of the wireless infrastructure project for Priorlake High School, Twin Oaks, and Hidden Oaks, installing the wireless access points as per the recommended specifications from our vendor. To continue, we would then move forward to research and continue and pilot our data warehouse solution as a district. And we would pull a group together to look at really what that, identify what is the data warehouse, what the district needs it to do, but also too, what's important if we make that decision moving forward. And so, our total cost in the Phase 1 recommendation for 2012 is the following, and it's not to exceed 600,000 for all of these components in Phase 1. Some of the work that we've found here over the last couple of weeks with our vendors is we still have some unknown questions, we still have some unknown answers to the questions that we've asked. And, you know, looking at the proposals, we have comparable proposals from HP and Dell, but there are some nuances to both of those that we need to find some additional clarification. And so what we're asking is, part of this yearly lease payment, that it would not exceed a certain amount, and that we would come back to the board with a full update of really the answers to those questions, and the actual direction that we're going, whether it be HP or Dell as a district. The secondary wireless solution, installation of wiring, and then also factoring in additional dollars for the cascade plan for furnishing and wiring of the pod labs. The second part of the recommendation would come later in the year, or into 2013, 2014, and that would be implementing the elementary wireless infrastructure project. Upon completion of that, review of the data warehouse, identify a solution, recommend a product for implementation, and ongoing funding source. With the data warehouse, this is not a one-time cost, there is a year-to-year cost associated with, once you purchase it and implement it, as well as ongoing. And so we need to identify that, so what you see up there are cost estimates and ranges at this point, just from the standpoint of gathering a sense of really what, as a district, we could be looking at as a possible cost for data warehouses. And so when we factor these together, our total cost for Phase 2 is, we're recommending not to exceed 525,000. But as we flush out more of those details, we would come back to you, I mean, this is more or less an earmarked amount of dollars, knowing that as we identify these as priorities, once we know what, once we know what the data warehouse is, the implementation costs and the ongoing, we would come back to that, and that number would be formalized by the spring of next year. With that, discussion.
We had a fairly long discussion about this in the workshop just a little while ago, but does anyone have any other questions or want to speak to what we talked about? Okay. So your proposal is to move forward with the upgrades in technology, not to exceed 600,000 dollars?
That is correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion to accept that proposal? By Stacy, second?
I'll take that.
Eric?
You know, if I might, Stacy, I was going to make a slightly amended proposal, or motion, would be to accept the plan, accept the proposal, with the contingency that we allow administration to enter into any agreement, or, I'm sorry, bring any agreement back to this board of $100,000 or greater for approval, with that agreement being, you know, over the life of whatever, right? So that we give the administration some leeway to move ahead, but we set a constraint on where something needs to come back to the board. And that would be consistent with what we've done in Facilities Committee in the past, and at a level equal to the superintendent's contingency, so that there's some expectation coming back that any, you know, that agreements of any significant amount, and I'm thinking that $100,000 or greater, would then be part of the motion to come back to the board for approval for those vendors, and that's what we've done in construction contracts and technology contracts in the past.
I'm not sure I understand, Eric. Are you thinking that as they go forward and find out more detail on these vendors, that depending on what that dollar amount is, they can go forward?
Well, what this allows us to do, as we talked about in the meeting, is set the 600,000 in our budget, but what it does do is it sets for us as a board to say that we will give administration leeway to spend up to $100,000 with any vendor, but anything of $100,000 or greater needs to come to the board for approval, any agreement.
Beyond the 600,000?
Above the 600,000?
No, within the 600,000. Any agreement within the 600,000 has to come to the board for approval. So if we're going to enter into a contract with Dell or HP, that comes to the board for approval. If we're going to enter in with an installation contract, Facilities Committee will have to do the bidding process and everything, those typically come before the board. And I just want to make sure that we have that clarification, that these agreements, once they're reached or determined, or the details of the proposal come together, that they come to the board for approval.
Okay. I was expecting that we would have to, that, I agree with you, that needs to come to the board, I was expecting it would come, or we would open the meeting on the 25th, but if we're comfortable with going forward with that parameter, I guess, that might make...
Well, it would mean it would come back on the 25th with the proposals, both for the infrastructure and for the desktops, would come back on the 25th. We would open the meeting for that proposal and vote on the 25th.
But what it does is it just sets a parameter for the entire two-year expectation, right? If we can bring something in under $100,000, and it's in the budget, we can do it, anything in excess, again, comparable to what we've done with building projects in the past, and technology bonds in the past would come before the board, and it just sets that parameter so that you guys have the flexibility to take care of the smaller agreements and move quickly on them, but big strategic ones or whatever would come to the board for ratification.
I'm still not quite sure I understand this.
So if I could make, if I could make a friendly amendment to the motion, right? I would say, we approve, we approve the recommendation with the contingency that any agreement with a vendor where the expected value of that agreement is equal to or greater than $100,000 requires board approval, period. So you're looking for the final sign-off, if any, or if it's over $100,000. Final board approval for any agreement?
What is that going to do to the process that we're, is that timeframe-wise?
From a process standpoint, there's very, from a taking steps standpoint, there's going to be very, we will gather information, we will get the information that we need to receive from HP and Dell, so that we bring that back to the board for review and discussion. But as far as moving forward with moving things, that would be on hold until the board takes action to allocate those funds so that we can place the order. So it would be postponing those steps two weeks for that to occur.
Three weeks?
Three weeks for that to occur. And that would, down, that would impact our timeline to get the computers moved, ordered into the district, and then deployed into the district. And most likely, we'll push some of the implementation into the fall of the next school year.
Eric?
How would that be any different than if we were to do what we had talked about in the past, earlier, and bring that agreement on the 25th? Why does this set it back an extra two or three weeks with this constraint?
I'm thinking with the, as far as our recommendation coming forward, if, we're not going to spend funds if the board doesn't agree with how we're going to be, how we're recommending to spend funds, so then, in that regard, we wouldn't be spending anything or allocating any dollars until the board agrees with the recommendation to spend over the $100,000 for the computers. So we would not be placing those orders until after the board takes action. So, we, we would not be placing those orders till after the board takes action.
I guess I was under the impression that if we approved your going forward with this plan without knowing for sure which company we were going to use, that that would give you some, buy you some time to do that, to get some of the preliminary work done. Are you saying you can't do that until you have a company?
It would get some of the preliminary information, but by postponing the ordering of the equipment for three weeks, it would also, it, it takes ten, fourteen days to get that equipment into the districts, and now we're looking at mid-July for the new equipment. There may be some shifting and some things that we can do with the equipment that we currently have in-house, you know, removing some of the staff equipment, that certainly has to happen, but it's the ordering of equipment that would impact the installation throughout the rest of the summer.
Okay, so, I thought I was told that there were things that needed to be shut down and could only be shut down a certain way, and you needed to know whether we could go forward with the updates in technology, so that isn't the case?
As far as things...
I don't know what you needed to shut down.
Okay.
I think you're talking about the, the giving teachers directions and staff directions of what needs to happen before they leave for the summer or for the vacation?
Yes.
That that, having that would, would, would help, so having the approval of the amount of money would allow you to...
Correct. It would allow us to communicate with teachers as, as they look forward to the next week of this, last week of the school year, there would be certain things that they would want to do on their desktop, because most likely, when they return from the school for the next school year, they will not have that current computer in place. So, if there's any file that's on the hard drive, they would be saving it to the server, they would be moving, they would be removing anything from the desktop that would, you know, that would want to keep or not have. And so, basically, when the team comes through and takes out the computer, they're not going to get that computer back, or, or if later down the road, you know, they say, whoops, you know, I forgot to take off this, they wouldn't have that opportunity to do so. So, we would be working with staff probably this next week to do that, to make sure that their computers are, they have all their documents saved on the server, so that they can access those with a new computer.
Or an alternative, for example, we have music teachers that have high school libraries that they use for their curriculum, and that's a, those are large files, so we would, we would store those files into a thumb drive or, or external hard drive. But those, those music libraries have to be removed from the local hard drive and then placed back onto the new equipment eventually.
And if we don't approve anything tonight, you sit and wait, till we do. So, there's a few things you can do, but it doesn't move it along fast enough, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, that wasn't what I understood, Eric. Any other comments from the board as to what direction you'd like to go? Is there any value in the sense that, you know, us saying that we want to replace nine hundred and fifty computers, you know, with a three-year lease, depending on who it is or what it is, that those details and the contract details and the exact cost details can come back to us when you have that on June 25th, but the intent is to replace those amount of computers?
Certainly, if, if you, if, if by approving this tonight, you're allowing administration to make a decision after vetting the rest of the questions to go HP or Dell, not to exceed the amount that we're listing here, and, and you're, and you're approving that, we could certainly proceed forward with those orders. The other part that we could proceed forward with is the wireless piece, you know, we could proceed forward with that, we're looking at one vendor, we've looked at other vendors, this is the solution we're moving forward with. Yeah. I, I'm not sure I followed the question as far as, with HP and Dell, you know, there is a cost difference between, you know, our proposals that we have here this evening. And so, looking at those, once, if, if the board is comfortable with us making that decision to place those orders, we can certainly do that before the 25th and bring you up to speed on what, what the order has been and how we're pursuing, proceeding.
I guess myself personally, I would like to see the project move forward. I'm comfortable with staff, you know, on, on that recommendation. I would expect, obviously, we're gonna get an update on the 25th, but I do think time is of the essence. The feedback that I've gotten, and I know Suzanne has gotten, is that this is the number one priority for our staff and to teach our children every day here in the district. And so, for us to continue, you know, I, I would like to see everybody active, ready to go when they come and hit the buildings and all, so. Any other comments?
I've just, it's, you know, the role of the board is to enter into agreements, right? We have the contractual, we have the contractual responsibility, and when we've done other large projects, other large initiatives, this board typically hasn't delegated that responsibility. We've gotten bids, we've brought them back, and I'm just suggesting that we do that same thing, although this time that we haven't done in a lot of other cases is set, is to allow administration to take care of, you know, some of the smaller stuff, you know, without coming to the board, and that's the only thing I'm doing. But I'm saying that we treat this project like every other project we've done in the past or should have done in the past.
And I would say that as a governance board, that your role is to allocate the dollars and let administration decide which of those vendors meets the criteria that you've set. And so, that, there's a difference there, so we have a difference of opinion, because I believe that the administrators here, along with Julie, and I have been working really hard on this for the last month or so, and we're getting pretty close to having those decisions ready to go and ready for you to approve. I have no reason to think you won't approve, wouldn't approve the, the recommendations that we bring forward, and certainly we could do that in email fashion for you to see prior to the 25th, and then 25th give you an update. But in my mind, if we've agreed that we're not to spend in excess of six hundred thousand dollars, you've looked at all of the vendors, you've had a few questions, we'll tweak those answers, so that we get the exact information, give that out to you, make a recommendation, but as long as it falls within that, that dollar amount, then you as a governance board have said, this is what I want to see happen within this, these parameters, so you're studying the parameters already. That's my feeling.
One, I would say as governance board, we've allocated the, the budget as we said we would. Again, as been our standard procedure in the past, the board approves contracts, and I believe that's one of our roles and responsibilities, as well as, you know, approving employment contracts, hiring and firing, right? I'm just suggesting that we follow the same standard procedure we've always had in the past, with the, with the exception that we're allowing, you know, up to a hundred thousand dollars to be managed by the administration, which I think is wholly within the governance model, something we haven't done in the past.
Well, I can see both sides.
Yeah, I can, I...
Eric's right, we always have approved contracts as they come forward before you go to a vendor for anything. And I agree that, you know, time is kind of of the essence here, I would like to see the teachers and the students come back with everything in place. The only solution I can come up with is, I don't know how long it'll take you to get the information, I know you've had, you've struggled with one company to get the information you needed, that we have a very short, special meeting to make that decision. I guess that's the compromise to what I see happening, if we can get a quorum.
So, I think what we've got is we have an amendment to the initial motion that we have to vote on, is that right, Martha? And then, depending on how that comes out, then we can vote on the motion in a second.
Yeah, I need your help, Martha. Okay, so I, I have a motion and a second, and I have an amendment.
Oh, I need a second to my amendment.
You need a second to your amendment.
Which is what exactly?
Again, it's to accept the proposal with the constraint that any agreement with a value great, equal to or greater than a hundred thousand dollars come before the board for approval before executing.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Any other comments?
If you're voting on the amendment now.
So, all those in favor of, oh, go ahead, Rich.
So, what we're voting on now is Stacy's with Eric's amendment. The first voting on Eric's amendment.
Just my amendment.
Voting on just his amendment.
Which basically takes Stacy's proposal and adds in the constraint of a hundred thousand dollars. Or the clarification, I should say.
It's likely, I can see both sides of it, and I guess I would be open to a quick, short meeting, as you suggested, to approve the final contracts.
And that would come after this, this, I mean, we need to vote on this first, right? Okay. Any other question?
You know, it's, I think we've had this come back with us a couple times, you've had them go and get information, this isn't like the first time that this has come forward, so, you know, I, that's why I feel comfortable doing it, they've asked the questions, and we've asked them to come back and, and answer those questions, they have answered those questions, they've been stalled by a vendor, to me, that's a big red flag, I, you know, to me, I, I think we just move forward with the proposal.
Okay. So, we've got a second on the, the amendment to the proposal. We need to vote on the amendment, correct? All those in favor of the amendment as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That amendment fails, and we move back now to the original proposal, correct? Any other discussion on that proposal?
Can you restate it?
The proposal is that we approve administration moving forward with upgrades to technology not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars. And now, do I keep the same first and second on that? No, I need another first approval.
Can that be me?
Sure. I need a second. If I don't get a second, it dies, is that correct?
Well, no.
We can make another motion then.
But that, the first proposal's done, okay?
The first phase one...
This is way past my knowledge of Robert's...
I know.
The six hundred thousand.
I, I thought the initial proposal, once the amendment to the proposal failed, the initial proposal was still on the table by five.
But she was restating it.
Yeah.
Should be restated.
So, it's been first and seconded?
Already.
Okay. So, any other discussion? Richard, you still thinking?
Yes. So, the proposal is just to go ahead with this Phase One recommendation not to exceed six hundred thousand?
Right.
And if this motion fails, then what is it? Does a new proposal?
I don't think there would be, there, nothing would happen. I, I think the questions that we had in the workshop regarding the two vendors, they would go forward with researching that.
Go to the questions and then come back?
And come back, but that would all wait till the 25th of June, unless we choose to have a, a special meeting.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Okay, all those in favor of the proposal as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion, what does it do? Three, two, it passes. Okay, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to suggest that we do have a special meeting to address the, the two vendors, we would need a quorum for that, we would need four, four board members, and I'm not sure what kind of a timeframe you think is realistic.
We would be able to have the answers to the questions or response by both vendors by the end of this week.
Okay. And without two board members here, I'm wondering if we can do, can we find a date by email, is that okay to do?
Any previous...
Okay. I think I would prefer to go forward with that, since we only have five of us here tonight. Okay. Anything else, Eric?
Quick question. Is there any reason why we wouldn't do it on the 25th? Is that, are we saying that's too late when we have our board workshop?
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Ideally, it would be nice to have it within the next week.
Yeah. And as I fully anticipated, we, we would be able to have a response from both vendors by the end of the week to the answers to the questions that we have lingering out there, so that we would be able to present those results to you and have a recommend, formal recommendation of Dell or HP moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the roof improvements budget bid results. Jim?
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Dr. Grover. I have in front of you a bid tally sheet for bids for the roof at Glendale. The apparent low bidder was Palmer West Construction, with all the addendums, and to complete that roof was four hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars, which is slightly over our bond money budget. I would like to ask if we could go ahead with that project using the balance between the bond and a deferred maintenance project for this building roof repair. So, I'd like to leverage the money that the board has already approved for preliminary work on this building's roof as a deferred maintenance project, add it to the, the bond money from the 2005 bond to complete the roof at Glendale.
Can you tell us why you believe that's the right thing to do right now?
Well, for one thing, it would complete that school, so Glendale would be done with roofs, it's forty-year roof throughout the whole building, and that's where the kids are. I think it makes more sense to focus our dollars now where the children are at. This roof will need work, but we can tweak by it for a couple more years.
Do I have a motion to accept the roof improvements project bid for Glendale?
Somewhat.
By Rich, second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meal prices, Julie?
Good evening. Before you, you have a letter from Jean Winter and myself indicating that lunch prices would increase by ten cents for next year for the 2012-13 school year. One of the reasons for this is we have new federal regulations requiring the district to now serve a half a cup a portion of fruit and vegetables to all of our students. In the past, there was an offer versus serve, we offered five choices, students could take three of the five, and one of those would have been a fruit and a vegetable. Now, we're required to serve that, and so, we will have higher food costs, and so, we're asking for that increase of ten cents, and if you noticed, that will be the first increase we patent for years.
Do I have a motion to accept the increase in meal prices for 2012-13? By Stacy, second.
I will second.
By Rich. Any comments or questions? It'd be interesting to see if the kids take the fruit, or eat the fruit.
We're looking at many options to provide that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Police liaison.
And we've had a wonderful partnership with the City of Prior Lake, providing our school resource officer to the district, and we'd like to continue that partnership, and you see before you a request for forty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, it's about a three percent increase over last year. This money is paid from our Safe Schools levy, we also have a school ladies officer from the City of Savage that provides that same service to the school district. We have approved that budget in a prior board meeting.
Do I have a motion to accept the Prior Lake Police Liaison Agreement?
Somewhat.
By Todd, second. By Eric. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. You're up for a while here.
Yeah. We have a budget adjustment for the current year budget, it's just solely in Fund Seven. In 2010, the school board approved an advanced refunding of bonds, that money was set aside in an escrow account to pay for those bonds in 2011 and 12, and the, this money from the escrow account needs to be accounted for in Fund Seven in our budget, both in revenues and expenditures. This is not an increase as far as the amount that we're, we levy to our taxpayers, it's an amount that we had set aside in an escrow account to pay for these funds. And so, I'm asking that the board approve this budget to increase those revenues and expenditures from thirteen, two fifty-four, oh thirty-five, to twenty-two, oh twenty-one, to forty-eight per revenue. to forty-eight per revenue, and then from twelve million six eighty-nine nine ninety-eight to twenty-one million four fifty-four one ninety-eight.
Do I have a motion to accept the budget adjustment, um, as stated?
Submove.
By Stacy, second.
I'll second it.
By Rich. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Preliminary budget.
I'd like to start off by discussing, uh, two thousand and twelve thirteen budget. Um, in the past couple of board meetings, we've had some, um, discussions about what would be included in this budget. We've had some class size reduction dollars in the past that was utilized from our federal jobs bill dollars that we're now, um, paying for out of the general fund. And one of the items is some carryover for some staffing that we had at the middle and , um, secondary level, high school, middle and high school, about a hundred and six thousand two fifteen. We've added four point four teaching staff at the high school. So, we have about a hundred and eighteen thousand seven fifty remaining in our class size reduction dollars for two thousand and twelve thirteen. In addition, the board approved in May some additional staffing at the high school and throughout the district, and those items you can see here, and you've seen many times, is approved in May. Those items are also included in this budget as we go forward. Talking a little bit about enrollment, and, um, we've talked about enrollment. We know in the past, we've had, um, thoughts that we were going to be decreasing it in our enrollment. We found that we're really steady, we're, um, have some actual student population decline. It's very minor, about fifty students right now, but we anticipate that we will probably see, um, fifty students come through our school district in the summer months. And so, we anticipate that we'll probably be very stable, even though we're budgeting for something less than that. Um, for the final budget as we go through, we'll bring the final enrollment numbers. But as far as our, um, actual, um, as you can see, we have a decrease of about fifty, the forty-nine point seven. But because we have a weighted average daily membership, um, pupil units are weighted higher at the secondary level, and that's where a majority of our students are now, um, for the money that we receive from the district, we're very stable. It's about the same dollar amount that we've had in the past, or same number of waddams that we, our pupil units we've had in the past. And so, I wanted to bring that forward to let you know that even though our enrollment is dropping, our pupil units are stable. One of the things that I thought was interesting as I looked back, um, what we thought would happen, that bottom line, the curve line, um, you can see that, um, we thought we would be somewhere in this area, um, moving slowly, declining, but now we're finding out that we've actually, um, increased the past year. You see a slow decline here, and probably what will happen, if we were able to stay steady, this line will probably look something like this for the future. We are anticipating to be conservative, a decline, however, I don't anticipate if we see those fifty students come in, that we'll probably be more stable than we're actually anticipating at this time. Some budget, um, revenue assumptions that we have, again, I've talked about the stable pupil unit enrollment. Um, we did see a fifty dollar, about a one percent increase in our basic formula for this year. Our literacy funding is new funding that we received. I've talked about that in the past, that's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, unfortunately, we've had some additional students set up qualifying for free reduced lunch price meals that are in our district, and so when we had, see that increase in our free reduced price lunches, we did get additional compensatory dollars. It's also called basic skills dollars and that we receive. And so, that adds up to about three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-five thousand. So, we'll see that additional money come in for this next school year. There's no increase in our fee structures for, um, our activities. Um, we still see a cash flow deficiency. We are receiving sixty-four percent of our funds in the first year with a thirty-six percent, um, amount of funding that we'll receive in the next year. That's a change a little bit. It was sixty, forty. We see a little bit of an increase, um, for this next year. I don't anticipate that interest rates will increase for next year, so that will stay the same, and we'll continue to receive access dollars. And one of the things that we've just found out on Friday is that we will continue to receive that, and actually, the dollar amount will go up a hundred thousand dollars. That hundred thousand dollars is not in this preliminary budget, but we will add it in for our final budget, and we do have a plan of how to utilize those dollars. Our revenue sources, overall, the district receives five thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars per pupil unit in state aid, and the voters have also approved us, the district, to, um, levy for an additional thousand fifty-one dollars per pupil unit. We received federal sources and special education and title programs for this year. As you remember, our federal jobs bill dollars, um, those have, are no longer eligible to be received for this twelve thirteen school year. Other local revenues and state aids and levies, um, as required. For expenditure budget assumptions, our staffing allocations at all levels are based on our enrollment. We look, um, very, um, clearly at our enrollment, trying to anticipate what those enrollments will be at each level, and staff based on that. Um, we take into consider, into consideration all our contractual obligations that we have across the district with, um, all of our unions and non-unions, and also what's like companies like our transportation and garbage, those obligations also. We do have a small increase in transportation and fuel costs allocated for next year and, and those staffing assumptions that we made, that I talked about at the beginning of the presentation. Um, the continued expenses due to access, that will change also with the final budget. Categorical expenditures based on our revenue that we receive, such as that safe schools levy that we just approved for the, um, school resource officer. Our federal education, we're assuming that will be funded at the, continue to be funded at eighty-eight percent, and the access, um, special ed will be funded at sixty-six percent. Um, one thing that will add this for next year is our core cost expenditures for Carver Scott Educational Co-op. We're estimating that to be about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that is a new expenditure for the district. And then we did have some increase in our liability and workers' compensation insurance of about sixty thousand dollars. And that's all for Fund One. Um, Fund Two, we do have some budget changes. Again, I talked about the twenty-five percent, or the twenty, the ten cents increase in our, um, lunch prices, and that will be reflected in our revenue for Fund Two. Our debt service fund, um, we currently have five bonds, and we must bond, um, five percent, over a hundred and five percent basically of the principal and interest payment for that year. Um, we do have a technology bond that was refunded this year that we have, again, in an escrow account that will be paid off in the twelve thirteen year, and so that will increase that budget, however, it does not increase our taxes payable. Our internal service fund, we currently have two liabilities, our OPAB liability and our health insurance, and we will also include our dental insurance, um, as it was approved, as it was approved in May. Our fund balance, as you can see, it's estimated, our overall total, um, I'm looking at this number right here. At the bottom, the total for our, um, unassigned is five point five million. That's what we anticipate our fund balance to be. That's just a little slightly over eight percent. Our board policy is that it be somewhere between five and eight percent, and we're anticipating it will be right at that eight percent or a little higher for, at the end of the school year. And all of our other restricted areas, um, those restricted areas are specific, um, requirements and legislation that we utilize those, um, restrictions for the specific purpose they're intended for. Fund balance for all of it, all of it, all other funds for food service, you can see that we're going down slightly, um, about a ten thousand dollars in that fund, and we try and maintain that fund and keep it steady as much as we can, um, for any unexpected expenditures that we may have. Um, community education, you can see, we're also spending down that fund. We do have a requirement that we not exceed a twenty-five percent fund balance in all areas of the community education, so we try to stay within that. Total billing fund, you can see that we're spending that down. The board just approved to, it to be spent for the Glendale Roofing Project, and that fund will now be spent to zero. And you can see our debt service, um, the sixteen million, about twelve million of that is levy, remainder about four million is from the escrow account. And we have our internal service fund and our revocable trust for the OPAB bonding. Any questions or discussions?
Any questions from the board? We've gone over this a few times in workshops, so it's not all new to us. And you need approval?
Yes, I need approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the preliminary budget for two thousand and twelve thirteen? By Eric, second. By Stacy. Any comments or questions?
Um, you know, I think just to comment, um, this takes us to where we said we'd be a couple of years ago, that we'd be making decisions, looking beyond just a one-year period, but, but trying to make decisions long-term, and I appreciate that we've been able to do that and still maintain a balanced budget, uh, in the foreseeable future, which was another commitment that we made, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Julie.
Thank you.
Um, next on our agenda is the district office and board monthly calendar, um, activities calendar. And as I mentioned earlier, um, it has been separated out to have workshops and meeting topics. I know this was updated, um, well, it was a number of years ago, probably five or six years ago, and it needed updating now. Some of the things that were on here were out of date, so I appreciate, um, all the work that went into reviewing this. And then dividing out with the workshops, um, I guess I'd like to stress that the workshops, um, topics need to be fluid. Um, there are some that are obviously, certain times of the year, we're going to want to discuss, um, but there's a few things on the list, um, under work sessions specifically, that may be just updates, and updates are not what we want to be talking about at a workshop, um, unless it's of something of concern, or, um, I'll give an example, an update on kindergarten census should be at a board meeting in my mind. If we're going to talk about what we're going to do with kindergarten, half day versus full day, paying versus not, that's more of a work session topic, uh, just as an example. So, that kind of needs to be tweaked a little bit. Also, I'd urge board members to, um, get back to myself or Sue Ann about topics that they would like to see in a work session so that we can work them in appropriately. One of the things that will be coming up is a review of our board goals, to see how we've done, and then to develop new ones for this coming year. Does anyone else have any other comments about the calendar?
I would only say that these, um, the work studies, uh, session topics were created only as a beginning place, uh, as a placeholder, if you will, for the kinds of conversations that we can have at our study sessions, uh, and, and they are intended to always be fluid, um, to, to begin to have, uh, conversations as we move forward, um, but they will definitely change, and we'll have to look at them probably at every couple of months, look out, uh, look out two and three months to see what those topics might be that are, um, important to, for the board discussion as we move forward.
Any other comments? Okay, um, I'd like a motion to approve the, um, calendar because it's been presented.
Submove.
By Todd, second.
I'll second it.
By Rich. Last comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five zero. Um, next, we'll move on to the superintendent yearly evaluation. This evaluation includes the job description for Dr. Grover as well as her goals. An evaluation was sent out to all administrators in the district, um, and all board members. A good share of the administrators did respond to the evaluation, and all of the board members did. And just to review the process, once that all came in, we did it on Survey Monkey. Um, it was all tabulated, and then, um, myself, uh, Todd Sorenson and Stacy Rall, as executive members of the board, um, met and reviewed that information, and following is, um, a summary statement and our recommendation, which I'll read, if I can last. Annual performance review summary for Superintendent Sue Ann Grover, July first, two thousand and eleven through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. It is the opinion of the Prior Lake Savagery School Board that Dr. Sue Ann Grover has met and in many areas exceeded expectations in her duties as superintendent of Prior Lake Savagery Schools. We also believe she has met her established goals for the two thousand and eleven, twelve school year. This summary statement is based on evaluative feedback received from administrators, cabinet members, and all board members. As we continue to experience the financial challenges of our economy, Dr. Grover and her administrative team have presented opportunities to maintain and improve our position as a highly achieving, well-respected school district. Specific areas to note include cost avoidance initiatives with the C program, self-insurance and health and dental care, fiscally conservative and timely decisions in regard to class size reduction, dollar alignment to the strategic plan, and recognition for excellent financial management for the third year in a row. Dr. Grover's ability as a forward thinker is evident in her leadership with curriculum, technology, and innovative programming. Examples include continued growth of Bridges, the Alternative Learning Center, Sage Academy for Gifted and Talented, Eastham Immersion District-wide, as well as creative technology at the secondary level. Her leadership continuously guides the district to align decisions with our strategic plan and vision cards. Academic achievement remains high as evidenced in improved test scores, student test scores, as well as student recognition at the national level. Dr. Grover represents our district well at state and federal venues. Local community involvement is critical to the success of our district. Dr. Grover does an excellent job of marketing the district in an effort to maintain and increase student enrollment. She continues to develop new and innovative partnerships, both within the community and in the metro area. Dr. Grover's communication with the school board staff and community is consistent, timely, and thorough. Her use of technology with various media sources is quite effective. Over the past three years, Dr. Grover has voluntarily withheld her financial benefits in her contract. At this time, we feel it is appropriate to fulfill our commitment and honor her full contract agreement. This recognizes and validates her leadership over the last four years and demonstrates our confidence in her direction for the district in the coming years. Before I take a, um, a motion or a vote on this, um, Dr. Grover had a few comments to make about some of the, the pending goals.
Right. Thank you, um, Chair Schimmick and, uh, Executive Committee and Board. As you know, everything I do is based on our framework for the future. Um, our vision cards, our strategic directions, which I placed a copy in front of you, just in case you, you wanted to reference that. Um, I am very proud of our work this year. It's been collaborative work that we've done together as teams of administrators, uh, both, uh, at, at the district office, at the building level, with our, our teacher leaders, uh, with our teacher union, uh, and with all of our community members as we've, uh, tried to achieve greater student achievement. I have in front of you two different documents. One is, uh, file the, the tier transition report. We don't have the MCA two scores as yet. Uh, they don't come out until August. Uh, if we're lucky, they will come out in August, and we'll be able to compare those, uh, to what we, we heard in the news last week about our two thousand and ten and eleven scores. And I anticipate that we'll have good results. But what we do have are predictors, and what we found out in best practice in working with our RTI, response to intervention, and our tiered services of delivery, is that there are very solid predictors of best practice of what, uh, is going to be a successful student, what makes a successful student, um, on the MCA twos, and that is their performance in kindergarten, first and second grade, on their letter, uh, letter name fluency, their letter sound fluency, other nonsense words, and, um, the, uh, curriculum-based, um, uh, assessments that go on and on. And what you can see in front of you are, is the growth from fall to winter, which is our, our highest predictor of success, and the growth of our kindergarteners is at four percent, um, and their letter names at five point nine percent gain on their letter sounds, and their nonsense words, uh, they're looking at, doesn't seem to be any growth there, although that's a, an interesting phenomenon in first grade, when you have a variety of different students coming into one grade level, uh, both your half day, your full day, your students that have been in, uh, preschools, that stayed for that kindergarten year, and then come together, uh, here at our district. So, that we've maintained, but we're looking at different ways to assess that growth. We're not finding that that's as sufficient. Then you look at, at year two, and we have two percent growth now. So, we're looking at success based on the predictors of our kindergarten first, second grade students, and, uh, evidence shows us that in fact, we are, uh, continuing to grow. And if you look at our year-end comparisons, being And if you look at our year-end comparisons, beginning with '08-'09, with our kindergarten scores, our first grade scores, and then in second grade, we didn't start them until '09-'10, you can see that our average growth each year has been significant. Again, at the first grade level, we have a little bit of a dip, but we do have it at our kindergarten way over above that 2% as well as at our second grade level. So whatever is happening at the first grade level, we'll continue to unravel and fix, and pick that up in the coming year. But certainly, these scores indicate that we're doing quite well, and we will do quite well on our recent testing of our students. And then the second piece of data that I have before you is just the kinds of awards that our students, our staff, and our district has been awarded just in this coming year. And there is a four-page report for you of just the kinds of awards that we're receiving from the national level, with the Washington Post naming our high school as one of the best in preparing students for college, to the AP Honor Roll for being one of 11 schools in the state for the top AP program, not only in the number of students that we serve, but also in the number of students that we serve that come from a variety of different backgrounds. So those were two really big ones for us. We've been working very hard this year to get the word out about our district, to market our district, and to that extent, we've been very successful. Through working, Kristi and I working together, we have now, and with Marcus adding to the team, we have a YouTube channel, we have a Twitter account, we have a YouTube account, we have been doing our blogs and entries in a variety of different formats, as we reach out to our families, to our community, in ways that are meaningful to them, and we continue to look for new ways to do that. So that has been a success for us as we've moved forward, and not to mention our award-winning video that we created last summer, that was given the Star Award by the Minnsboro Organization just recently. So there are awards and honors in here that go way beyond here. Anytime you make a list, you leave about three or four or five really important things out, and I'm sure I have done that. But just for your references, board members, to know that we continue to set the bar higher and higher for our students, and for our staff, and for our community, and we'll continue to do that at all levels as we move forward into the future. I'm very proud of the work that we've accomplished together, and I know that we'll continue to do more good things as we move forward. One thing that didn't get on an award roll, but that really should be, is that we brought our ABE, ELL, and GED programs back into our district. They were only being offered in Shakopee, so our community members needed to travel there, and with the leadership of LeAnn Reibek, who happens to be here tonight, we have created programs for them to stay right here. We've been able to connect those students that have aged out of our ALC program and bring them back so they can get a GED. We've been able to meet the needs of families of students that are in our system during the day and meet the adult needs during the evening. We've been able to meet a variety of different needs right here in our own community using our ALC, as well as our early childhood center in the evenings to meet the needs of our students. I'm very proud of the work that has been accomplished this year and of LeAnn's leadership there. We've also started our organic recycling this year, and it's been with great success that we've been able to get that rolling. We've had schools that have outdone each other with their organic recycling, and we're moving it into the high school gradually. Those are the students that haven't gotten used to it, the younger ones are all over it. So it's really fun to be in the schools and see the students sorting and resorting their refuse, so that they're putting them in the right places, and they know exactly if it's not right. So those young students coming up will make a huge difference. So we're working in a partnership with the Midwakka and Sioux in order to get that recycling plant, get the organic recycling to the plant, and then using that, we'll work to refine that relationship as we move forward. And then, of course, technology has been a huge impact, area of impact for us this year, and we're excited about the opportunity to put new desktop stations on every teacher's desk in the coming year. We believe that that is the way that we're going to be delivering curriculum in the future, and having our teachers come up to speed is going to be a huge benefit to them and to us as a district, but most importantly, to our students in the coming year. As we look at more and more ways that technology is impacting student learning, we're really going to have the opportunity to maximize those curriculum options, as well as our smart boards in the coming year. We're very excited about those opportunities for our staff to really feel engaged with the technology that they have in the classroom. So with that all being said, I'm very happy with the year, and I know that there's a lot of good work to be done in the coming year, and I look forward to working together with the school board, with the administrators, and with the community.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion based on Dr. Grover's review and the summary review and recommendation of the committee to approve the summary recommendation.
Similar.
By Todd, second. By Stacy, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five-zero. Thank you. And thank you, Sue Ann, for all your work. Moving on now to the resolution of certification of District 719 census. I don't know, is that Julie?
Every year, the district can request that we adjust our census population, and this affects our Community Education Fund. The more households we have, the more households we need to serve with our Community Education ECFE areas. And so, LeAnn and Linda have gone to a great extent to give you exhibits of how they came up with the increase in our total household in District 719. They've worked with the Met Council, each of our cities, and our county to distinguish what our actual households were, and we have a number of people per household is 2.85. And so when we calculate that out, that comes up to our 41,462 total district population. And that is an increase over what the census came up with in 2010. And as I said, the exhibits included do give you the background of how we came up with that number.
Do I have a motion to approve the 719 census? Hi Stacy, second. By Rich, any comments or questions?
And what's the reason for?
When we levy or...
Okay, it's for the levy?
It's for the levy certification, so that we have the correct number.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five-zero. Joint meeting discussion, will you take that?
Each summer, we schedule joint meetings with our cities, City of Savage and the City of Prior Lake, and also with our Laker Educational Foundation. We have two of those meetings scheduled, or one of those meetings scheduled, which is August 6th with the City of Prior Lake. Our City of Savage, we're not having a joint meeting at this time, but we will continue to meet. Lee and I are having meetings with the city manager and Mayor Janet Williams this summer, so we'll continue to look for opportunities for that to happen. And then our Laker Educational Foundation, we have two suggested dates, either July 17th or August 21st. 6:30 to 8:30 would be the time. And those are their regularly scheduled meetings, where we would join them.
And Martha, has that been, that date, either of those dates have been sent out to the board? They have, so we still don't have a consensus.
No, you did use your statistics.
Pardon?
You did use dates for work, for down this month.
Okay, so a dissubstance.
Uh huh.
Okay. Any comments on the meeting?
July 17th or...
I won't be here, but August 26th, I will be.
Maybe Martha, could you send an email out, and we could respond to that on those two dates? Again, since we're missing two members.
Melissa?
Okay, moving on to policy. I believe these are all first readings?
No, second, well, yes, first rep, the first, second, and final in July.
The first one being continuous improvement of programs. Jeff, would you like to talk about that?
Certainly. Policy 604, earlier this year, came to the policy committee, came to the policy committee as a, you know, just one that we were looking at from the standpoint of talking about some changes to it. The intent of this policy is to make sure that programs that are not necessarily curricular in nature, there's opportunities to evaluate the program, look at best practice, look at research, look at the current, I guess, state of affairs in all of those different programs. And so, looking at this policy, you'll see a couple of changes, and this was discussed at a board policy, but was several months ago now. But the, there's a couple key changes to it. One, it aligns the work to more of a vision card approach. It aligns the review policy to more of a vision card, to look at what is it that we're measuring from the health of that particular program, or where that program needs to go. It also takes into account and identifies the different programs, changes in some of these areas, so it cleans that up and is a more accurate reflection of the current programs we have in place. And finally, it also recognizes that there are times when certain things necessitate where a program needs to be reviewed. There are things that come up, change in standards, change administrative goals, school board goal, that may trigger certain programs that need to be evaluated during that present school year. And so, from the board work session, there were a couple of, I think, suggestions that there be some language in here, and that's what you'll see in the review process, number two and number three on the last part of the policy, just circumstances that may trigger a full review of any of these programs during the course of the year. But absent of those triggers, or absence of those specific instances, every five years the programs listed in the policy would undergo, would convene a committee to undergo a review of the program and either develop a vision card. This is a first read for you, busy.
Does anyone have any questions? Clarifications? No? Okay, this will come back for a second reading. If you get home and you find other some questions for us. The academic recognition program? That's also Jeff.
The academic recognition program also, it also undergoes a bit of some change here that goes hand-in-hand with our valedictorian and salutatorian change, moving away from that. It better identifies our Ford Scholar Program as a result of that committee's work through valedictorian, and it honors the essence that we still want to recognize students for their accomplishments at the graduation. So you'll see some changes there, and it removes the salutatorian/valedictorian distinction as we're approved at our position. This is also for our first read.
Thirty questions? Okay, and we'll move on to the next one, health and safety.
This will be Jim Gallo. Julie?
Good evening again. New policy for the school board to consider for health and safety. Years past, the Department of Education wanted the school district to submit paperwork, attachment ten, to apply for funding, levy authority for health and safety. This year, a M.D. came out with a new way, which is, actually, we have a policy that recognized health and safety being important to school. And that's basically what's in front of you now, just outlines our program for health and safety.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on health and safety policy? Okay, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Community education. LeAnn, are you coming up?
Good evening. The policy on page 102 in your packet has been revised with the help of the policy committee to be more in line with the format that we're currently using, and also, a lot of the language that was in there from, I think it was probably 1990, some of that's changed, so we tried to make it more standard, so we won't have to change it as much in the future, where it has each program area, and it also follows the state statute and what we report on our annual report. Any questions or comments?
Any questions aboard?
I guess I have one quick one. So anything, I mean, great overview, anything that, we've got a lot of lines here, which seem to be clarification, but anything of significance that you would want to call out on here?
I think that the language is more in the now than it used to be, so especially under early childhood, where you see all the strikeouts. I think those are philosophical ideas, so a lot of the strikeouts, the policy committee was teaching me that you don't need all of that revision there, so it's not like there's anything major.
Well, that's, I guess what I was asking, because as I read through it, it seemed to be more clarification, cleaning up.
Right.
I was just wondering if there was something in here I missed that might have been of significance.
I don't believe so.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, LeAnn. We'll move on to administrative reports. LeAnn?
I found the paper. As you heard earlier, our ADSIS, our alternative, it actually has a name. It's State Aid for Specialized Instructional Services, and it's called ADSIS for short. We've had the good fortune of having this funding for the last two years. This year, we were able to, on Friday, learn that we have, got, received a grant for $450,087.44 in the coming year. This is $100,000 more than we've received in 1112. And the purpose of these funds is to provide instruction and services K-12 for students that need additional academic and/or behavioral supports to support their general education environment, and in so doing, hoping to reduce the number of students that receive special education services. So we're very excited about the new funding that's coming our way. We'll be able to expand it. We began with kindergarten, we've moved it up through the middle school, and now we'll be able to have support at ninth grade, at the ninth grade level as well. So we're very excited about this opportunity to expand our services to students. And today, brand-new news, Redtail Ridge has earned a $5,000 award for their Project Green sneakers. They received the first prize in the category of 501 to 1,000 students, because they collected 1,099 pounds, or equivalent of two pounds per student, of sneakers and rubber-soled shoes over the course of about six weeks. Students and families, and even community members dropped off sneakers that were weighed and then shipped around the world to those needing footwear. Other schools that participated were, included Westwood, Twin Oaks, Hidden Oaks, and the high school. And the schools received 50 cents per pound when they were weighed in, and so we're very excited for them, and that was announced to the students this afternoon. Five Hawks has been notified that they are the DSI winner. They're the top recycling school in the district this year. They've averaged 15.29 pounds per person of recycled paper, plastic, aluminum, and organics for the full school year, resulting in an 85% of their waste being diverted from the landfill. Or in other words, they recycled 73,410 pounds and only threw away into trash 11,691 pounds. It's quite impressive when you put it that way. Glendale teacher Abby Gash was awarded a check for $7,500 for assistive technology and iPads from the Century Link Quest. This grant was written in connection with other special ed teachers at the high school, and is one of four grants that they've written together in order to get assistive technology into the classrooms of our students needing them. And special thanks, of course, to Kristika, our school board rep, which we mentioned before, who's been so faithful and coming, is only not, absent because of the award ceremony going on simultaneously. And a reminder that Friday night, that is June 8th, and our commencement beginning at 7:30, and it will be livestreamed again this year for website viewing. If you just click onto our website, you'll be able to catch it there. If you aren't able to attend, as well, as it will be aired on Channel 17 throughout the summer. So we're looking forward to a beautiful night, no rain, sunny skies, as we graduate our seniors on Friday night, and everyone is welcome.
Thank you. We'll move on to administrative reports. Kristy?
Just like to give you an update on where we are with our district's phone survey, our customer satisfaction survey. You should have a hard copy at your workstation. This is a draft. It's quite lengthy, so you can take it home at your leisure to look at it. But this is the survey that we do, the larger survey we do as part of our district's strategic plan. And if a lot of these questions look similar to years past, they are, and that's by design so that we can go back and compare how we're doing as a district over time. But as we do these, we always add a few new questions as well. And so you'll find in this survey, the main changes are in the areas of maintenance, technology, and world language immersion. So we're asking some questions of residents in those areas. As in years past, residents, it's a random sampling of residents, and residents do not have to have students enrolled in the district. So we will have that. The timeline I have for this is hoping to get this to decision resources by Friday. Then they would do, they'd get to work on that phone survey right away, and they expect to have preliminary results mid-July, and then they would again do a board report. Phil Morris would come and do a board report in August. So if there's any questions, do you look through it, or questions or comments? If you could get those to me, call me, email me, or if you have any questions now, I'd entertain that as well.
Any initial questions? Okay. Call Kristy if you have something after you go through it. My understanding is they're a professionally wordsmith, all these questions?
All tested, yes.
All tested. And then I think, Jeff, you had something else?
I have two quick things to speak to. Most recently, you've heard or have heard about the state's release of the MMR data, the multiple measurements rating scale. Just, I sent the communication out to you just in, just kind of a quick clarification. But just looking at that, it is the state's, that's the state's response to the waivers and no shell left behind, so they have created a new system in which to gauge each school's proficiency, student growth, achievement gap, and if you're a high school or have 12th grade graduation rates. So the information that was most recently released is a key part to that, and that's they're taking the data from 2010 and 2011 and creating a composite score or a baseline for where schools were at. And these were results that we've known, these are results that have been reported to the board, but I guess, that's what we look at, is they've taken a new lens to look at how schools are performing under the state's system. And so, there were three distinctions that schools could have, I guess, could have been designated as. One would be priority and focus school, of which none of our schools were awarded. Those who are, I guess, were determined to be of that designation. Those schools are at the bottom level, based on most students are proficient, or there is achievement gap disparity. And the final designation is reward school. One of our schools, Westwood Almond Tree, was determined to be, or did receive the designation of reward school, so that's very good news. We had separately, a couple other schools that were very close, right on the cusp of that reward school designation as well. Looking forward, the true test that we're going to be looking at is the recent testing that we just finished in 2012 this year. Those results will come out in August. And so from there, they will be compared to this MMR results that have just been sent out as far as comparison to look at growth, proficiency, to look at those next steps moving forward with the session. So I'll just provide the clarification.
Okay.
And then, the last thing that I have, it certainly would not be the last week of school, wrapping things up for the school year, if there were not some sort of letter coming from my office congratulating people on a wonderful year, but then talking about fall workshops and things that we're working on next year. And so, there was a communication that I did send out today to all staff, just kind of doing a brief summation, but also kind of talking about all the things that we have in store for next year. So I will also send that to the board members so that you have that as well.
Thank you. Any other administrative reports? Okay, any board reports? Eric?
I have a quick one. And about three weeks ago, I had the opportunity to sit in with Scott County Historical Society. They are redoing their strategic plan, and one of their areas of focus that I discussed with Suan was getting more integrated with the school districts and education in general. So I just received a kind of a summary of their findings, I'll forward it to Suan and the rest of the board, and then let her distribute it as she sees fit. I think it was a good, a good exercise, and hopefully, a new partnership that we'll be able to leverage going forward.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay. Future events, June 7th is the last day of school. June 8th is the all-staff breakfast. I hope you can all attend, 7:30 in the morning at Twin Oaks. And then, as Suan had mentioned, June 8th is graduation at Dan Patch Stadium, and that begins at 7:30. I think we're supposed to be there about 7:00. And our next work session will be June 25th, and Martha will send out some possible dates for us to have a special meeting.
And actually, she just did send one hour. Just so you know, Monday morning at either 7:00, 7:30, or 8:00, somewhere in there, if that would work. That would be this coming Monday, June 11th. Just so you know, that's on, you have an email on your Prior Lake account, so you can think about that, and we can let those people that aren't here know about that date too, or find another one.
Okay. And I hope Chad doesn't get a cough like Stacy and I am, sorry. And thanks for your patience with my voice, Stacy. Is there any other comments or requests from the board? Okay, then, I'll take a motion to adjourn. My Stacy's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries five-zero. Thank you.